Call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. We will begin this evening with public input, so if there's anyone here for public input that would like to come up and share, now would be the time to do so.
William Strength, 1515 Hampton, here in Pittsburgh. Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, you can relax tonight. I do not have any questions that I will ask you to answer. I just have a few statements for your consideration. You have asked us why we have been so interested in Silverback other than stormwater. We were told that if we did not agree with the way things were being done within the city of Pittsburgh by both the chairperson and a member of the P&amp;Z board, that we needed to get involved. We have started to do this and will continue to be involved even after Silverback has been resolved. To that extent, we are requesting through the Freedom of Information or through the Open Meeting Act that we now be notified of any scheduled meeting of P&amp;Z and any special meetings that P&amp;Z is called on, so that there is no more so-called closed meetings which happened on May 23rd. I told you that I was not an engineer when we were discussing the stormwater or lack of stormwater on Silverback, but I was going from what a contractor would see on plans and understand. I was a senior estimator, senior project manager for both the commercial and civil construction companies and have put together bids for projects much larger than Silverback Way or Silverback Landing. I would like to read a couple of the conditions of the permit titled Approved Conditions from the State Department of Agriculture Division of Water Resources. One, the work shall at all times be subject to supervision and inspection by representatives of the Division of Water Resources. Another one, the clearing of trees, brush, drift, and other debris in order to maintain the work sustainably in accordance with the approved plan is hereby authorized except that the removal of planning made especially for habitat and environmental -- is not suitable for this approval, not authorized by this approval, mitigation by this approval. Well, the thing is, none of these permits are part of the bid package. The contractors have no idea what these conditions are, and I only read a couple of them and didn't even go into the ones dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers on this project. Again, as being a senior estimator, these are things that would be important to me to put to bid together as I start thinking about my methodology, what equipment I'm going to use, and all that goes into cost. Now, all that's going to do is lead to change orders. Now, change orders is a good way to have a non-transparent project cost. Everybody sees what the initial bid is, but as each of the change orders come in, they don't add it up. They don't see it. The public won't see what the total project cost is going to be. The only reason I know all that is because we requested that information through the Freedom of Information Act. Number three, as the goodness of the developer, which we heard a whole lot last week about with the retention pond, in the report that Frank Young put together for the county commissioners earlier that day, it states in here, "Review SWPP as submitted to KDHE for site to point out areas of concern that were indicated. Sediment controls are inadequate for off-site stormwater control during construction activities." He's not putting that basin in out of the goodness of his heart, as you guys were told. KDH is forcing him to do it in order to get his NOI. Again, transparency. I understand that within the city, you have the discretion of asking the taxpayers of Pittsburgh to give up their tax dollars for 15 years on Silverback Way. I understand that. I'm not quite sure why you would be asking the county to give up their tax money for 15 years. And most of all, I definitely don't understand how you can go and ask the students USD 250 to give up about $1.2 million, and that's based on the developer's timescale in his RHID, over the next 15 years, you're asking the students to give up that money. Does that mean USD 250's got a lot of money? If we put two students per house, 60 houses, that's 120 students. How many more teachers does that mean's got to be added with no additional money coming in? And that's for phase one alone, and that's so the developer can make $3 million. 60 lots at $50,000 a lot, that's $3 million on the tax, on the back of our students. I would like to thank both the mayor and the city commissioners for not answering my questions last time, because their failure to do so has raised more questions within the community. Thank you.
Bill, I have a question for you. You talked about that meeting on May 23rd. That was a closed meeting. I got, I think you left some paperwork there for us to pick up, and I picked up an email requesting certain people to come to this meeting. Is this what you paid for and you got this?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, but I'd have to, I'd like to ask Cameron some questions about this meeting now that I think that you would not add.
I wanted to say something to Bill first.
Okay, Bill.
I'm actually really glad that you guys have decided that you want to get more involved in the future, and I have always been glad that you guys have been coming here and speaking up. And if you put even half the amount of energy and research and time into projects that you're excited about and for, as you've done for this one that you guys are against, I think that that'll be a really great asset, so, anyway, thanks.
Then you'll appreciate that.
I do.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Is there anyone else for public opinion? Well, as this is for public opinion time, it would probably be most appropriate to move on to --
So I can ask Cameron the questions after.
Talk about that afterward.
All right, that's fine. I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here for public input? All right. If not, we'll close input. Thank you again, Bill, and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda this evening?
I'd like to remove item B, please.
Are there any others to be removed? Or if not, I will look for a motion to approve minus item B.
I'll make a motion to approve minus item D.
I second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Genowitz? Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McNae?
Aye.
Menzel?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B reads, "Approval of staff request to increase the municipal court probation fee from $50 per case to $75 per case and to establish an additional probation fee of $50 per case when probation is extended or reinstated upon revocation as determined by the municipal court judge and authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending Pittsburgh City Code Section 1.7, subsection G1."
I would just sort of like to hear you talk about the, just the reason for this and what you hope to get out of it.
Sure. So, in 2003, the municipal court approached the city commission at that time to ask about starting a probation officer in municipal court. One of the issues that we were dealing with at the time was our failure to pay fine warrants, because prior to that, any probation was unsupervised. So if they had sanctions, Alcohol Safety Action Program or something like that, there was no follow-up and no follow-up on the fines, and so, at that time, we asked commission to approve this position. And so, that was granted in 2003. We set a $50 fee for probation at that time, and it's continued for 15 years. We're at a point now where the probation officer has more paperwork to do, more reporting to do. The caseload obviously is growing as, we try not to put people in jail. It's a last resort for a variety of reasons. Obviously, somebody can't earn money and pay fines if they're in jail, so probation is an alternative. We also do some ankle monitoring, different things like that. Basically, we're just asking for a raise, frankly, for this individual that was hired in 2003 and has worked 15 years. She is here sometimes till nine or 10 o'clock on Wednesday nights, dealing with her clients and paperwork and things, so we just thought it was appropriate and timely to come ask for an increase. The additional fee we're asking for is, a lot of times, if you think about it, someone is put on probation for six months, and so she earns about $9 a month, little more for that person. If they don't follow the sanctions of probation and it's extended for another six months, for example, there's no additional fees collected, so her per-month pay goes down to about $4 a month with that client. And so, we're asking for a change in the ordinance to give the municipal court judge discretion that if he feels an additional $50 probation fee, if it's extended, is warranted, then he'll make that recommendation, but it only comes through him. It's not an automatic, we're going to add $50 every time it's extended. Does that answer your questions?
Yes. What is the average fee for this kind of thing and just?
Sure. In district court, for example, they charge anywhere from $86 to $125, depending on what type of conviction. The misdemeanor convictions are at the lower end, the felony convictions are going to be at the higher end, and then a lot of it has to do with sanctions. Do they have to report once a week? Do they have to report bi-weekly? Do they have to report once a month? And so, that can fluctuate those charges, too. So, with our fee at $75 per case, we're actually under district court, but our restrictions probably in some of the more serious felony cases they see aren't nearly what we do here.
Is there any, so this probation officer, her pay is directly related to the fees that people are paying?
Correct. Correct. So, the probation fees are assessed as part of their overall fees. They'll have fines if they, for example, if it's a DUI conviction. They have to go through the Alcohol Safety Action Assessment Program, so there's a fee for that. If they do a diversion as part of it, there's a fee for that. The probation fee is added into the fines and fees. Whatever's collected from those fees are paid back to the probation officer for her services. So she's basically a contract employee with no hourly wage. It's whatever her client list is, that's what her pay is.
Is that typical for that position in other places?
For courts of our size, yes, yes. When you're dealing with district courts, they're full-time employees, they're paid simply because their caseload is obviously much more significant. The same if you get into probation officers with the Kansas Department of Corrections. They physically have to go out and monitor their clients, so they do home visits, they may have to go to make sure they're going to AA appointments, NA appointments, and those kinds of things, so much more in-depth. So basically, it's a use tax? That would be a way, yes, yeah, pretty much.
So Pittsburgh, sorry, Sarah.
No, go.
So Pittsburgh is not at a point yet, then, that we would need a full-time person on staff not paid for through a use?
No, no. I think we're still, the folks that are placed on probation, you know, rarely does Teresa have to revoke their probation. She's, you know, she's been doing it for a long time, and she knows how to keep them on the straight and narrow, and she'll give them every chance. You know, if they miss an appointment, she doesn't automatically revoke. She'll try to work with them, what's going on. You know, to be honest with you, we have folks that come in and pay $10 a month towards a multi-hundred-dollar fine because that's all they can pay, but they continue to pay every month, and it's through her efforts that we keep these folks on track to get their situations resolved without impacting their lives, more than is necessary, I guess I should say.
I hear what you're saying, but man, I just, I wish there was a better way to have this individual on staff.
I think she's, she's getting paid for what she does. It's a commission situation. If we don't need her more, why hire her for more?
Having worked with her just a little through the school system, she's excellent at her, she's excellent, and we're lucky to have her.
She is, you know, she's available. We'll, we'll call her, you know, in the middle of the night on Friday and Saturday night if we're dealing with somebody we know that's on her list, and she answers the phone, she'll help us out. She's been tremendous to work with and a great asset for the city. Sounds like she's worth the money, then. Sure. Sounds like she's worth the money, then. Absolutely.
I just wish there was a different way to pay her. I don't, I don't know.
This isn't her full-time job.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
This isn't her full-time job.
No, no. She, she meets with her clients usually starting around two or three Wednesday afternoon and runs through Wednesday night, so it's just once a week here.
Guess I don't have any more questions.
No more questions? I move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Public hearing. So, the city of Pittsburgh advertised for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, at 5:30 PM to receive input regarding the city's application for funding from the Kansas Department of Commerce for a Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant to demolish the Schlinger Park's waiting pool and replace it with a splash pad. So, Kim, you were going to come up and introduce a little bit.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. This public hearing is a requirement of the application process for the Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant, so we're excited to have this public hearing, and I would like to especially thank the Everybody Plays Committee and the individuals and businesses who have donated or continue to donate to the Everybody Plays Funds who have allowed them funding to continue to help us support projects like this and all of the good things that have happened in Schlinger Park. And I would also like to thank Brian Coombs and the staff of Olson Engineering. They've helped us put the grant application together, and Brian is here today if there are any questions. So, with that, I will open it up.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if anyone wants to speak on behalf of the project, please feel free to come forward.
Hi, I'm Barbara Herbert. I'm actually chairman of the Everybody Plays Committee, and so when you saw that application, you saw that there was $80,535 that the committee actually already has in place in the community foundation to pay our portion of that project if this application gets approved by the grant. Just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing. Are there any questions regarding the motion or the application?
So what's next? We need to?
So, move to approve if there is such a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Consider the following. Resolution number 1208. Consider adopting resolution number 1208 certifying legal authority to apply for the 2018 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit the application for funding to demolish the Schlinger Park waiting pool and replace it with a splash pad.
Thank you. This resolution is the resolution to stating that the city has legal authority to apply for, for the grant. The estimated cost of the project is $328,635, of which over $80,000 of that will be, will be paid by the Everybody Plays Funds, and over $20,000 of that will be, will be city work, will be forced labor through city worker and equipment, so we're actually asking for $225,000 from the Kansas Department of Commerce through the grant process. So, this resolution is just saying that we have the legal authority to apply.
There's no questions? I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item B, resolution number 1209. Consider adopting resolution number 1209 assuring funds will continue to support the operation and maintenance of a new splash pad in Schlinger Park as part of the application process to apply to the Kansas Department of Commerce for the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Again, this resolution is just to assure the Department of Commerce that we will continue to maintain the splash pad and the operations of the splash pad through its lifetime.
I have a question about that, Kim. Are, on these block grants, are we always asked if we're going to be able to support it?
This is the first community development block grant I've done, but in every other grant that I have done, we have, we have had resolutions similar to this.
That's similar to the grants you have for the trails that we would say we will maintain.
Correct.
So, Kim, how does the $6,000 compare to maintaining the pool that we?
The current drain and fill pool? The number's a little, a little tough to determine because it would really just be right now what we, what we pay for the lifeguard that's on staff. With, with a splash pad, we won't have a lifeguard on spot, on, on staff, per se. We will just have somebody that will need to check the chemistry of the filtration system. So that $6,000, we really anticipate being the chemicals because it will be a recirculation system. The current pool is just a drain and fill pool, so we, literally, it's about a 19,000-gallon pool that we're draining and filling three times a week currently. So, so we're estimating the $6,000 right now. That, that number may vary a little bit. We'll have to see as we go for a few years what that exact number's going to be.
Any further questions?
If there's no further question, I move to approve.
All second. It has been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item C, Statement of Assurances and Certifications. Consider approval of a statement of assurances and certifications to accompany the city's application for funding from the Kansas Department of Commerce for a Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant to demolish the Schlinger Waiting Pool and replace it with a splash pad.
And again, this is just the assurance that, that we will continue with the project and, and maintain it in accordance with the Kansas Department of Commerce standards.
Are there any questions?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Good job, Kim.
Item D, Ordinance Number G-1187. Consider approval of Ordinance Number G-1287 amending Section 78-73 of the Pittsburgh City Code to designate and establish the proposed extension of Walnut Street in Pittsburgh, Kansas, from the south line of West 28th Street to the south line of West 29th Street as a main traffic way as defined by KSA 12-685, all within the city limits of Pittsburgh, Kansas.
This is just the designation, the paperwork side of things. It's required as part of our financing, so is the fact that that is what this is meant to be. It's supposed to be main connector for the 28th Street traffic to get around back to the 29th Street at a Broadway traffic signal to be able to better enter Broadway traffic.
There's no questions? I move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item E, Resolution Number 1210. Consider adoption of Resolution Number 1210 providing for the improvement in construction of Walnut Street in Pittsburgh, Kansas, from the south line of West 28th Street approximately 530 feet to the south line of West 29th Street.
Again, this is just related to the financing for that project.
Are there any questions?
If there's no questions, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And item F, Professional Services Agreement. Consider entering into a professional services agreement with GE Warren Associates to perform analysis and other activities related to the creation of an electrical utility for a fixed fee of $20,000 plus actual reasonable expenses. Jay?
Hi, Mayor and commissioners. You know, the city through its planning processes, we do a five-year financial forecast every year, and, you know, obviously, as we do that, we look at all of our cost centers, and we've, we've identified electricity as one of our cost centers that really is at risk of outpacing our revenue streams, right? And so, we started looking at that, you know, what can we do about that? Started meeting with Westar as early as 2014, just to, you know, to see if there's anything we could do to kind of stabilize that cost. And since, you know, we've been, we met with them all the way up to their executives in 2017, and, and we met with a lot of other players in the field of, you know, Black and Beach, Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, Kansas Power Pool, Sunflower Cooperative. We met with a lot of people, a lot of players in this, in this area, and we, in fact, we created a study group in 2017 to kind of look at electricity, what our options were. That group has met numerous times, and they really recommended that we, you know, best, after hearing from a lot of these different groups, that we pursue the, pursue our options for electricity in town, but they were adamant that we needed to gather more information. I mean, we just didn't have enough information to know whether or not it was a good idea to move forward with, with alternatives like a municipal utility or other alternatives. So, so, you know, with the help of American Public Policy or American Public Power Association, we identified a, an expert in the field, Jerry Warren, and he was willing to help us with gathering the information that we really need. This contract really gives us the crucial, some really crucial information. He's going to help us identify what the likely purchase price will be of the distribution grid, what the wholesale power sources and prices might be, what our revenues might be if we do, if we did establish a municipal utility, some of the, what the long-term cash flow model might look like, so we can start really making sense of whether or not this is, this is a good idea for us. He's also had experience in the severance and reintegration, which actually is kind of a highly technical aspect of municipalization, which really sets him apart from other, from other consultants in the country. And finally, what we're going to end up with here is some information that's absolutely critical for us to decide if we're going to move forward with, with a municipal utility or any other kind of options that we might have. So that's what this, this contract's about.
Jay, I was on that study group, and wasn't one of the reasons we wanted to become our own electric utility, it would be an economic development driving force for us?
That certainly was, was an issue that has come up. We, we've been told numerous times that the electricity rates here are very high. I know we've lost at least one potential sighting that, because they said the electricity rates were too high.
So, if that's the case, did you get any information from any cities that are customers of Westar that are dealing with this same issue that they're losing industry because Westar rates are too high? Do you have any other information from any other cities that that's the reason they're losing industry?
We've certainly talked to other, other cities as well, but we didn't specifically ask them about businesses that they've lost.
Did you ever question Westar on what the cost would be to purchase their grid or whatever we're talking about?
Uh, no.
Isn't that a little further down the road? I mean, don't we need this feasibility study first?
Well, the, there's some, there's some standard, you know, calculations that you can make to identify what the cost might be, but the actual acquisition of the grid is, is laid out in state statutes. There's a process for, for doing that.
Well, you know, getting back on economic development, a driving force behind this, in the last 10 years, customers locally from Westar has spent $7.3 billion on economic development. So, if they're doing that, and their issue of the rates, I just wonder why they're expanding, especially to the tune of that amount of money if there's an issue with Westar rates. especially to the tune of that amount of money, if there's an issue with Westar rates.
I'm confused.
Aye.
I don't understand your question.
Well, I'm just trying to say that, you know, we want to show that we think the rates are too high, but some of our industries would seem to not think that because they have expanded to the tune of $7.3 billion over 10 years. And actually, you know, some of the rates that we was quoted, you know, by some of the people that was in there that want to sell us electric, and were, I think Westars was right around 11 cents per kilowatt hour. That's an all-in cost. And other ones were 6 cents a kilowatt hour. Is that an all-in cost, or do we know? Is that what it costs them to buy the electric? And then, you know, there's a lot of other factors that goes into why they charge per kilowatt. So is that their all-in cost, or is that something this study's going to tell us?
We've certainly done some looking at what those costs might be, but we really are not experts in this field, and that's one of the things we're going to ask Jerry to look at.
I just returned from a League of Kansas Municipalities, a conference in Topeka, and I spoke with, I can't tell you how many people, about this electricity issue. And without exception, the people who have gone this way have sang high praises. So I think it behooves us to go ahead and take the next step. That doesn't mean we're going to go all the way to the line with it, but we have to have the right information in order to make the right decision down the road.
This is merely more information that we need to have, really, before we can make a decision whether or not it's the right thing to do.
I think the time for discussing, you know, I think the easy answer, Chuck, is so are you offering up that companies wouldn't expand even if they had to regardless of what it cost them, and that just because they could do it cheaper, they're not going to expand?
No, I wasn't saying that at all.
And I think that's the answer is, you're going to see growth. Just because groceries go up, people don't quit eating. Just because power goes up, people don't quit expanding. They've all got profits. This is a simple case of the city, for four years now, studying to find the best alternative for the taxpayers and the businesses in the city of Pittsburgh, and that's our job. I think we've got a fantastic individual identified after several months of going through stakeholder meetings, which you were a part of, and Commissioner O'Brien was a part of, and before that, Commissioner Gray was a part of. And I think it's just down to that, before we come to you with a big question about, do we really want to look at this? Do we think it's something we need to consider? We need the best information we can get for a reasonable cost. And so, in this case, $20,000 gets you exactly what Jay outlined, which is a very high-level view of potentially what the cost would be to purchase, potentially what the cost would be to supply. And with those figures, you can kind of come up with a 20-year plan of what it might look like if we were to do this. And I think as far as that may be off from what reality is, it's enough information that may keep us from spending a lot more money after that point, based on what that says. And so that is the real reason that we're looking at doing this. The time and the place to negotiate everybody's opinion on economic development, what are or what aren't rates, is in the future. And there will be a lot of time given to that, and we'll be prepared to do it at that time. Right now, the question is, we've always said we need the best information to study it. This is the logical next step. It's the step that the stakeholders sent us to go do, and we've spent almost two months trying to find out the best resource that we can afford to do that in the reasonable amount of time, and that's what you've got before you.
And sitting there in the stakeholders meeting, I don't believe that there was a stakeholder that suggested we do not take this next step.
All right. So after we take this step, and then they will bring their findings back to the stakeholders' group?
No. They will bring their findings back to you, to this group. This is the group. This is the city commission's ball now. The stakeholders have done their work. They'll always be there if we want to go back and ask them, but this is to the point that they passed it off to the city commission, which is why we're bringing you this final piece of information, because the recommendation to go forward is going to come from staff to you, and you're going to be making the decision. And if you want to have the stakeholders come in, I think that's a time. If you're going to speak as a commissioner, that's one thing. If you're going to speak as somebody that sat through the stakeholders' meeting, I think it may be appropriate to have the stakeholders come back and talk about what their experience was, and talk about some of their pros and cons as well.
That wasn't my question. I just didn't understand.
At this point, it's in the commission's hands, and that's how we took that question.
That's what I wanted to make sure. After this study is paid for, then it comes to us, and then where it goes from there, we make a decision. And then from that point, I think it would go to court. I don't know the whole steps, but eventually, or before it goes to court, it would have to go to other people.
Why don't we settle with, we'll bring it back to you with a recommendation.
Sounds good, Darren. Let's move on, then we'll do that. So, good deal.
No other questions, I move approval.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay.
All right. Non-agenda reports or requests?
Yeah, I had a couple. I'll just get the one out of the way, because the next one might take a little longer. Any more information on ride development on the Westford Creek property?
We talked to him. I think we'll probably hear something back. The 1st of November is the latest. He said he may be through town on the week of the 20th through the 28th. If he is, hopefully, he'll stop in and have a face-to-face, but we asked him for a date, and he said the first week of November, so I'm assuming we'll have a, I think the commission meeting for November is November 7th, which is the end of the first week, so hopefully we'll be in with a little more specific update.
All right, thank you. Now I have a question about this meeting that Cameron, you was answering at the last So this memo says that we're going to, they're going to meet upstairs at City Hall. This is not in the normal setting for a planning zoning meeting?
No, it's not.
It's not the normal time?
No.
It says it's of high importance. All the people on this email attended?
I believe so, yes.
Were you in attendance?
Yes.
All right.
Can I clarify? Was that the work-study session you were talking about?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. That's what I'm asking about. But I didn't see one of these. And this is, when we have a work-study session, or we're going to take a tour or something, we have a news release when the five of us are somewhere that we're going to be together. We have to notify the public. I take it, is that why we do that, Tammy? So we notify the public that we're going to have a meeting? And I just wonder why you didn't have the news release when you set this meeting up, notifying the public that we're going to have a...
Were all five of us going to be there?
No, he's talking about...
No, no, the planning and zoning board.
They do have different levels of requirement on that. That's one of the things we're looking at changing, so that we do have that public notice for any future meetings like that for the group. We notified those that had been on our requested agenda list. I believe that's why the gentleman here asked to be added to that list as well. I say again, with that, primarily that session was to try and find out from the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, what information did they need to have, and what format did they want to have it in? Because we'd gotten several conflicting comments during the meeting. We just want to make sure that that was cleared up, so if they had the information in the way that they wanted to have it, so they can make their decisions.
Sure, I understand what it was about, but, you know, still, yet, I think, if you bear with me, I'm going to read off what the requirements is for Kansas Open Meeting Act.
But, can we stop for a minute? So we're an elected official, they're appointed. What is, are they covered under the same statute before we go down this road? I mean, what are the, no action was taken at that meeting, correct?
Correct. You have to provide an agenda, let folks know, those that have requested advisement of that meeting, if there's anything outside of the usual regular meeting.
Okay. That answered your question.
Does it answer your question?
No.
Because it doesn't fall under the same requirements that we fall under.
Well, according to this, it does.
That's for planning and zoning?
Yes.
Or is it for other...
For work-study. Work-study, and it covers...
For elected officials or planning and zoning?
Well, let me read it, and then you can answer.
Okay.
Next to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, next to the Kansas Conflict of Interest laws, the requirements of Kansas Open Meeting Act, COMA, present some of the greatest ethical challenges to municipal elected officials.
That's a special.
Perhaps no law better demonstrate the contrast between running a private and public business than COMA. Few private businesses would thrive if they held open public business meetings. Yet few elected governing bodies would survive operating in the dark, smoke-filled rooms of yesterday. This is not my words, this is what's in there. The public expects and demands a certain degree of openness in the management and conduct of public business, and COMA is designed to ensure that goal is met. COMA is uniformly applicable to all cities, therefore may not be modified by passing of a charter ordinance. Government bodies cover. COMA applies to the meetings of all legislative, administrative bodies and agencies of the state. Its political and taxing subdivision, including cities. In addition, all its subgroups, which I would take would be mean planning and zoning?
I don't know.
I don't know either. That's what I'm asking. Committees, task force, et cetera, must comply with COMA. Any group is considered public entity for the purpose of COMA. Then on the back part, work sessions, subcommittee, the subcommittee, planning zone.
That's a question.
That's a question. Covered by COMA. COMA covers work sessions, council subcommittee meetings, and informal meetings before and after regular meetings, as well as meetings with organizations and interest groups. So, why would our meetings be covered under COMA and planning zoning meetings not? Because we appoint people to the planning and zoning board meetings or any group. So in my, what I'm reading here, they are also covered under COMA.
So maybe our...
Chuck, maybe I can help here a little bit. Obviously, boards are covered by the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and notice of any time and date of a regular or special meeting is to be given to anyone who has requested to receive those notices, and the same is with agendas. Anyone who requests those agendas ahead of time is to be provided with those. So, if that helps at all.
So planning zoning doesn't have to notify the public when they're having a meeting that's not regularly scheduled in the place they hold them?
Anyone who has requested those notices.
Well, I would think that since we've been dealing with this development and the people that live in Benton addition, had they known that meeting was going to be held, they would have requested that information. The only way they found out that meeting was held was through the memo they paid for and found out that that took place.
So again, no decisions were made? This was simply a work-study session?
But still covered under COMA.
Well, but I'm...
We've had work-study sessions that we don't make any decisions.
I know. What I'm saying is, what was the purpose of them, of you guys coming? It was no input, no decisions. So I'm obviously going forward, we're going to look at how we notify people, or is that what I'm...
Mr. Strength will certainly be notified. He's made a request here today.
But I'm still saying, had they known that meeting was going to be held...
That no request was made previously? The reason that they were not notified, is that...
Correct.
Okay, that's the answer then, Chuck.
But, Patrick, they didn't know they was having a meeting, so how could they requested that information?
Well, they've been dealing with this for a long time, and...
Exactly.
You'd think they would...
Not if they didn't know anything about the meeting, Patrick. Come on.
Well, you know, there's really no point in discussing what happened in the past. Obviously, now you will be notified of all the meetings.
Sure. So we've made mistakes in the past on several things.
This was not a mistake. We followed the statute.
But we're saying that nobody requested to be notified at the meeting. And how could I, if I want to know about a meeting and I don't know about it, how can I make a request to a meeting that I have no knowledge of?
It is a...
Doesn't look right to me, but I guess the rest of you think that's fine.
I think we're following...
That answered my question.
Thank you, Cameron.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Turn anything else?
I have something else.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So some of you, I think that these are in the back, and each one of us got a little flyer that was made at my request. I think that voting and elections are very important. I personally believe that Election Day should be a national holiday, that everybody gets off work. But in lieu of that, I just encourage the city to kind of do a little initiative, election connection, or get out the vote. And over the next week, I am going to be sending a lot of these flyers out to businesses, encouraging them to allow their employees ample time if they need to go vote on Election Day, and to hang this in their break rooms wherever people congregate. And so if you own a business, or you would like more information, or one of these flyers, just let someone in the city or myself know, and I would be happy to facilitate that so that everybody who wants to vote on Election Day gets a chance to do that. That's all.
And if you don't vote, you don't get to bitch, right?
Right.
Do we know in advance ballots they're due?
You can apply for advance ballots up until October 30th.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, no one else has undertaken any initiatives in the meantime? Is Sarah?
No, we're done.
If there are no others, I will look for a motion for adjournment.
So make a motion to adjourn.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.